All right, I got six thirty we call the regular meeting in the common council order. We'll start with roll call, please.
Seth will be not possibly here tonight. Andrew?
Here.
Todd Kirkking?
Yeah.
Emma?
Here.
Todd Spade?
Here.
Cindy?
Here.
John will not be here. Crystal?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
And Justin?
Here.
Uh, pledge of allegiance. All right, item number two is approval of the January fourteenth, twenty twenty five regular council minutes.
This is Crystal and I would move approval of the minutes from January fourteenth, twenty twenty five regular council minutes.
Todd, I'll second it.
I've got a motion in a second. Any? Questions? Not all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Item number three, council announcements. Any member of the council have anything they'd like to bring up? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, which is the first period for public comment. Any members of the public? Wish to make a comment, now would be the time.
Hi, Randy Skinner here. Sorry, I can't be there tonight. I'm here in support of the welcome, um, welcome, Verroca Welcome Center. I'm on the Design Council and the Task Force and the Historic Preservation Commission. My address is E eight one eight seven Maple Dale Road. Thanks.
Thank you, Randy. Anybody else online? All right, hearing none.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
No, sorry. Deanna Padretti with Vernon Vineyards and I am here for agenda item number six.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item number five, which is operator license approvals.
Okay, we had three that went before public safety. Um, last week, we have Melissa Gabrielson for Pizza Hut is a renewal. Uh, Nola Karwoski is for Quick Trip South is a new one. And Haley Delahunt for Quick Trip South is a new one. All of these went through the background check and were fine and they forwarded it from public safety for your approval.
This is Todd. I approve the three operator licenses.
Steve, I'll second.
Got a motion in this. Make a motion in a second. Any questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, moving right along to item number six, discussion with possible action on application to serve beer and wine at Verroca Community Theater Variety Show by Vernon Vineyards on February twenty first through the twenty second, twenty twenty five.
This also went to public safety last week. This is something, um, the first time going through. This is similar to a picnic license. However, this is for a retail sales application, um, basically allowing, um, someone who has a retail sales, um, license to be able to go outside of their location to have, um, an area within our city, um, to, um, operate in. So this is for the Verroca Community Theater for, um, February twenty first and twenty second from five P M. To ten P M. This is a made possible through Wisconsin Act twenty twenty three. Um, so like I said, it's similar to a picnic license and they went through once if public safety approved it forwarded to you for your approval and then it would have one more, um, layer of approval to go to the state as well. So public safely, safety did recommend this for approval and so they're looking for your approval as well unless there's any questions.
You may have said this already, but this is a brand new thing?
Yes, this is something that happened with Wisconsin Act twenty twenty three, which allows retailers to kind of have, um, be able to go and sell their, um, in this case, it's wine and they're going to do a beer as well and they have to have operators just like any picnic license, but this allows somebody to be able to get a license in a different format, but it's similar to a picnic license.
Would there still be the limit of two?
There is no limit on this, I believe. I know, I think they can have up to three, maybe, um, I think Deanna said she was on there. Do you have an idea, Deanna?
Um, yes, um, there is no limit, um, on the license on the application that I provided, part G, um, number three has described municipal restrictions indicated. So if it was something that, um, you wanted to impose, you could, um, you could state that. Um, and then just a little additional information is that this act is only specific to producers. Um, so if you produce your own wine, your own beer or your own, um, if you're a distillery, um, you qualify under this. So it's, it's not something that I'm just gonna say like tangled hickory is a wine bar. They're not a producer. So they want to qualify under this act, but, um, Vernon Vineyards branches, anybody who produces their product, um, qualifies this. So the state of Wisconsin recognized for additional opportunities for, um, producers to be able to get, um, get their product out there. The only, the last thing, the time when I filled out the application, V C T hadn't set, um, the show hours. I do think the show is done by eight. So, um, the serving time probably won't span from five to ten. We really are designated to be there just during the show times of, um, the variety show. So I, I don't think it'll be a full five P M. To ten P M. It'll probably be five P M. Eight P M. Or five P M. To nine P M.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions?
Cindy, I make a motion to approve the application to serve beer and wine at the Verroca Community Theater Variety Show by Vernon Vineyards, February twenty first through the twenty second.
This is AJ, I'll second.
I've got a motion in a second. Any other questions? Not all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Thank you. Uh, moving down to item number seven, review and approval of historic designation of Gilman Champion Burr Oak Tree located at three twenty two West Broadway Street.
Um, Historic Preservation approved this at their last meeting. Uh, this is the third largest bur oak tree in the state of Wisconsin. As far as we know, it's been, um, um, it was tested, measured by a state representative and, uh, they've approved it to be a champion designated at a champion tree. And we certainly think it's something worth preserving. They think that it was a seedling in sixteen eighty five. Think of that, just think how old that is. So it's, and it hard to imagine. So it's, it's seen all of Verroca's history, you know, to see. So Moses Decker saw it, you know, when he went by on his wagon. So anyway, we're looking, asking the council to approve it as an historic site.
Just a question, is this something that the, uh, you know, this was brought on just by the historic preservation or was this the actual like property owner?
Oh, we definitely talked to them.
But they're all in support of it as.
Yeah, he was at the preservation meeting. Absolutely. Yeah, they're very proud of their tree.
Sure.
They've been concerned because people come by and want to cut it down for the lumber, you know, oh, we'll cut it down. And fortunately, they know they've got something special there and they don't allow it. So this offers them some, it's some protection.
How does it, it, you know, in full support of this, but I, the question I guess is if there ends up being some storm damage or the tree ends up damaged in some way, how does this impact the homeowner or, or anybody's ability to manage?
Well, it's still a certificate of appropriateness that would be applied. But I mean, I don't think it's something that, you know, dead branch or something. I don't think there didn't be any problem making like that.
I just wonder, you know, if something were to like blow off partially or something like that were to be a hazard, if it has to go through a lengthy process to be, yeah, you know what I mean? Like I, I think that's my only concern. Is if, if there needs to be some sort of fast action taken due to a safety or something like that, does that still cause, you know, how would the historic preservation?
Well, we could call an emergency meeting, but I mean, if this is safety thing.
If it's been there that long, it's, you know, not necessarily likely, but somebody, I was talking to somebody about this today and they brought up that point and it's a good point. I mean, trees, you know, have, sometimes they split or sometimes they, you know, they have issues and to be able to react to that without having to wait, you know, weeks for something I, that was this individual's concern. So I just wanted to bring it up. I think it's a great thing to do and a hundred percent support. I just wanted to try and talk to that process.
Second question, is there a, is there gonna be like a plaque or anything kind of describing like the history of the tree?
There's going to be a, we have historic preservation plaque like we have in several places in town. And then Gigi Macasette found a poem about a bur oak tree that she wants to be there. And then, um, Mr. Gilman, Norma, the wife has since passed away, who is really Gigi and Norma were the ones working on it. She's passed away. So we thought we could make it a memorial, you know, kind of dedicated to her. So he's going to come up with some kind of a sign also. So nothing is going to be on the tree itself. It's gonna be, but yeah, that's to be worked on in the spring.
Great. Other questions? And I think we need a motion.
Steve, I, uh, make the motion. We approve the historic designation of the Gilman Champion Burr Oak Tree located at three twenty two West Broadway Street.
Just I'll second it.
I've got a motion in a second. Any additional questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to item number eight, um, discussion with possible action regarding M O U defining shift differential pay for Verroca Police Association. And we're gonna go ahead and table that. And there's some timing things that didn't work out today, so we don't need to, to take that up. So nobody has any objection. We'll move on down to item number nine, which is discussion with possible action regarding lease agreement for Verroca Welcome Center and letter of intent with Verroca Main Street Chamber.
For the last, um, few months, we have been working with the Verroca Chamber on plans for them to become the sort of long-term primary tenant of the Verroca Bath House, um, which is a key sort of uh, ingredient to making project work overall, right? Building the space is wonderful, having a partner to occupy it and help support the operating costs is another key, um, key cog in that wheel. So what I'll have before you today, and I just finished this up with members of the Verroca Chamber today, so you didn't have access to an advanced copy. Um, but what I have in front of you is, is going to be two things. One is a letter of intent. One is a lease agreement and I'll start with a shorter one first. So where we're at in the project right now is the agenda item coming up next is a discussion possible action to authorize the project to go out for bids. That doesn't, um, commit us to the project fully yet. Once we get a, uh, bids in front of us and have a construction contract to sign, that's really when we're committed to the project one hundred percent. But we want to make sure that at this point, at this milestone, um, that we have affirmation from the chamber that they are indeed willing to be the, um, the tenant. And so what this document is in front of you, um, in some way signed by them, but I have a email, you know, basically saying, cause we were, we were finalizing things last minute or days in lieu of a, a signed document, they sent me an email saying, yes, please accept this, um, without my signature. And it basically says that please accept this letter as a, a good faith document that we will, when the time comes, sign the lease agreement that we've been working on drafting together. And it sort of goes through the timelines, the premises, things like that. Um, and there's some, some, some things that need to be sort of still work through. You'll see that the lease execution timeline indicates that it'll be executed upon substantial completion of the building and when it is deemed moving ready. Um, I, I do want to have a conversation with the chamber. I, I didn't catch this until we were a little bit too far along that. And I did have a conversation with one of their members today that we really would like to see a lease agreement signed prior to signing a construction contract. And so it's a matter of, um, timing, right? I think we would feel good with having that lease agreement at hand, but certainly having a letter of intent and then being vocally on board at this point should give us confidence. Again, this is the chamber. This isn't even a private institution that's been here a long time. They, they have, um, a longstanding partnership with the city of Verroca and I, uh, feel like their, um, good faith intent, uh, really means a lot. So essentially what they're saying is the lease that you're about to review has been reviewed by them and generally they're on board with all the components says and, and stipulations found therein. It's not a legally binding document and George will tell you that, um, our city attorney who has reviewed this, it's like, it's a very nice document and all, but it has no teeth to it. It doesn't commit them to anything fully yet. And, and that's all understood, but again, we're not the point where we're committing to the project yet. We're just authorizing to go out to bid. And so we're making sure that as we proceed in our milestones, we're continuing to show that commitment from the chamber. So with that, is there any questions regarding the purpose of this particular document? So then I'm going to move on to the lease agreement. I'm going to spend a little bit more time talking through this today because you haven't had the opportunity to see an advanced copy of it. I will say that this document is modeled after the lease agreement that we signed with North Point Development for creation of the daycare center. Whereby they put the money forward to make it happen. They let us rent it for a dollar, but then it's on the tenants. In which case will eventually be a daycare provider, but in this case it's the chamber to be responsible for as many of the ongoing expenses and costs as could be found in the building. Uh, generally the stuff that happens in the inside is their responsibility. The stuff that happens in on the outside of the building is our responsibility. So again, very similar to the deal we drafted with North Point for that daycare space. So I'm just going to walk through this very quickly. George Hopkins City Attorney has reviewed this as well and is generally, um, satisfied with how this is written, written, and this is a legal document, right? As a lease agreement. And so he, um, is much more, um, involved in this because of, of what it means. So again, we're talking about the Verroca Welcome Center, uh, bath house. Um, the intended and expected use of the building, we just want to make sure that it's known about, hey, what is this purpose? You're going to be leasing the building, but we need you to understand that this is what it needs to be for, that we've all agree that generally it's going to serve as a your administrative offices, a local and visitor information center, public restrooms, some meeting space, bicycle pedestrian trailhead. Okay? And that the creation and operation of the information center will be a collaborative effort in terms of like what goes in there. You know, what kind of information do we want displayed? We'll continue to be a collaborative effort between the Tourism Commission and, um, and the chamber. Um, item B here is an important one. This talks about the public bathrooms, bathrooms and operation thereof. The deal that's sort of been struck with the chamber is that, um, is that, uh, there will be public bathrooms that would be open even when a representative of the chamber is not there. So the building will be accessible essentially after hours on some sort of locked timer, right? We'll have cameras in the interior of the building for security purposes and we'll sort of work out some of the security redundancies. But essentially people can come in, use the bathroom, whether it's during farmer's market, other special events, or maybe they're just downtown. Maybe they just got done biking from Westby. They need to, you know, sort of freshen up before they go hit one of our restaurants. Um, the thought there is will cost share in the operation of the bathroom, because that's something that even if the city wasn't necessarily doing this bathhouse project, if we were just trying to create public bathrooms, that would be a cost that would come to the city anyway. So the thought process there is maybe a couple thousand dollars a year. The city chips in to the support the cause of the bathrooms. And basically what that means is that every year, a right around budget time, we would come together with the chamber and just say, all right, how long are the bathrooms going to be open every day? Is there going to be variations in times throughout the year? And how much is it going to cost us to clean it and make sure there's toiletries and everything else in there? And then we just decide on a budget together and, and that's what we're in for on an annual basis. And that for the most part is the city's only, um, contribution from an operating perspective, right? Is, is just contributing to the operation of the public bathrooms. Questions on that?
I guess it's, it's not really regarding that, but is this building going to be maintained under the Parks and Rec? Department? Or is it going to be shifted or reallocated somewhere else?
Yeah, generally the way, so it's a good question. So there's a couple of different things in here and, and we'll get to a little bit later down in the, um, in the lease agreement. But hang on one second, let me see, that's somebody in the meeting. So for this building, we're in charge of outside. Chamber is in charge of inside maintenance. So if there's a problem with the HVAC system, like the temperature isn't right, chamber isn't calling us to come take care of it. They have preventative maintenance contract with an outside vendor on call so that they come in and take care of it, right? That's part of what we're trying to achieve is we don't, we can help it a whole nother building to take on and worry about and have to go over and check out. If it's an exterior thing, like the roof is leaking or there's a problem with one of the, um, you know, there's tuck pointing that's needed. That would be a city responsibility. And typically when we hit that, if it's a building related thing that would fall to the public works department, they take care of the buildings. If it's a outside green space sort of thing, that would fall to Kale. And, uh, essentially the parking rack department will continue to sort of take care of the outside green space as they are now. Questions? And there are some caveats to that. We'll get that in just a second. But any other questions, Steve? That kind of get out where you're at? Um, let's see. This number C just says they can use the space as long as it's congruent with that and does put a little plug in there for Historic Preservation and Tourism Commission to be able to meet there once a month if they so need to. Property grounds, this goes a little bit into, um, what Steve was getting at. Uh, number one is that the city will continue to be able to use the property as it currently is, or if it decides to change how it's using the property around the building, you can do so. So that includes the, um, library's garden in the back, the hitching post for the Amish, whatever it may be, we can change that and city retains sole, sole discretion to do that. Chamber can use the space in the front so long as it doesn't, as, as long as it's generally congruent with the expected uses. Um, final design, we do have a document that, uh, our, our tech Mark Zettler will show us today and that's basically what everybody's agreed to as a team is this is what the design of the building is going to be. And as long as the final product doesn't deviate from that final design, we're good to go. And they've agreed to that. If we do have a bunch of change orders and we're changing anything, we'll just confer with the chamber before we make those decisions. Because of course, as construction happens, things come up. Signage, this does have, uh, money in the budget for some, um, for some signage off the bat. But if down the road, the chamber wants to add signage, they're responsible for paying for it and having it erected with our, um, express consent on it. Um, this just goes into naming rights. Build on furnishings, the premises, um, we're gonna take on the cost of build out. Okay? So cost of construction, use of donations and things like that. Furniture, there is a fourteen thousand dollar allocation of furniture that the city is putting forward as part of the budget. This has been a conversation that we've just had with the chamber and they're very appreciative that we're going to help furnish, uh, essentially the meeting room space, um, to the, as much as fourteen thousand dollars allows. And then, but they are responsible for their own desks and their own, uh, you know, other office equipment. If they were ever to leave, we retain the furniture we bought. Okay. Cindy?
It does say tourist info, or yeah, tourist information center also, isn't that fourteen thousand? Says meeting space and tourist information center?
Yep.
Okay.
And again, I think there, from this point to that point, there may be some slight variations in the lease agreement as we have time to sit with this more and they look at it more, but I would consider that a pretty non-substantive change if, if. And again, right now it's not showing any, well, I guess it's the construction plans wouldn't include furniture. Let me rephrase that. The construction plans, of course, don't include furniture, but obviously we're planning on furnishing the building. Uh, I T equipment is their responsibility. This talks about completion date. Um, punch list, they're going to be invited to go through and do the after construction punch list, just to make sure that they're seeing things they can, um, point it out and it can be remedied within the standard forty five days on the construction schedule. Um, it's as is. So if after those forty five days, nothing's been identified, they would still be covered under, um, you know, things that are under warranty. You know, usually there's a one-year warranty on these buildings, longer term warranties on some of the equipment. They would make notify us of that and we would be able to, you know, call in the warranty. Um, as the owners of the building, but after that it becomes as is, right? And becomes, that's when it starts kicking in becoming their responsibility. The lease term is fifteen years. Um, after that point, there is not an automatic extension clause. Um, I thought it would be prudent. We do our best to create these lease agreements, but I can't see out fifteen years and know what we got right and what we may want to change in the lease agreement. So it would be best if after fifteen years, if we want to talk extension, we come together with the chamber and we make those decisions instead of offering an automatic extension under the lease agreement. Rent is a dollar. Utilities are entirely their responsibility as the chamber. So that includes gas, electric, water, sewer, um, communications, internet, that sort of thing. Repairs and replacement, I alluded to this, if there are, um, they're responsible for maintaining a good condition or repair, all portions of the premises, including without limitation. Oh, just sorry, this is us as the landlord, right? So it goes to the structure, foundation, roof, exterior walls, fencing, landscaping, exterior lighting, exterior signage, except for the stuff that has then moved on to be, like if they add signage after the fact, that's, that then becomes their responsibility. And then we have here, this is where it gets a little, uh, nuanced is that we're responsible for sidewalk repair and replacement, except that, um, the carriage walk, the sidewalk leading from the multi-use path that's in front of the building to their building, they are responsible for clearing of snow and, and salting. Um, we're not going to add that to our list of things that the city crews need to get at. They can take care of that or cause, um, an outside vendor to come in and take care of that. But if the panel is heaving or if we need to replace the sidewalk, that becomes our responsibility. Um, of course, outside maintain trees and things like that. That's all our responsibility. And then the tenant is responsible for interior portions of the building HVAC systems. Um, and they have to do all that to our satisfaction. Signage internal or external that bears only the tenant's name or was installed or altered by the tenant. So that again gets to the point. If we have something in the building that refers to W P A Verroca Bath House Welcome Center, or I can't remember exactly what we have in there, Mark. Um, that's us, but if they have one, a separate sign that says Verroca Chamber, that's their responsibility. Okay? Um, and then after that, um, it just goes into boilerplate protections where if they're not taking care of their responsibilities on the HVAC system, we have right to remedy at their expense, right? Um, after giving them notice. Improvements and alterations, if they come in and they want to change a wall or do something to that, they have to do that with our written, um, consent, especially since it's a historic building and there was a lot of effort to try to maintain as much of the interior walls as possible, um, that they have to, um, work with us on that. Um, and but if they do make any improvements and we allow them to do, they can't take them with them. So that's pretty standard language. Insurance clauses. Um, governing resolutions, like a lot of stuff just gets into boilerplate indemnification clauses. No subletting or assignment of this lease without our, our written consent. Obviously hazardous materials was something that just is sort of boilerplate for us. And then what we do inventive default. So I'm not going to go through all of this. This has again been reviewed and vetted by George is a lot of the standard boilerplate language. Um, I think at this point, we've sort of gone through the meat and potatoes of the lease. Are there any questions or concerns at this time?
Next name?
If, if there would be say some vandalism or damage to a bathroom, um, is that something that like our insurance, the city's insurance or their insurance or?
Yeah, I'm not an insurance agent. That is a good question. We're in a lease agreement where that falls. I'm sure it's somewhere contained within this language, but as they are generally responsible for the interior of the building, I think it would start with them. And then, um, if there's any protections, you know, let the insurance companies fight about it. If it's to the outside of building, that's generally our responsibility. We would cause our insurance company to come to bear and then they can fight about it.
And you need?
No, the only thing I'll say is Kale, I think we, we talked good and long about this arrangement as somebody who would generally have involvement in the, um, maintenance and operation of the exterior of the building. I don't think there was any concerns from your department about what we were doing. I think it was, we were keeping it fairly simple in terms of landscaping at this point. Um, any efforts we could make to make that easier for him, I think we tried to do in the design without sacrificing, right? Like obviously we have a bike repair station, but we tried to move it away from the building. we tried to move it away from the building far enough so that he could get a mower back there and things like that. So I think we we tried to help that out, but I don't think you had any concerns at this point.
Who's, so like when the bathrooms are open on daily basis and the weekends, that's gonna fall on their cleaning responsibility. So it's not gonna fall on the parking rack.
Correct, that's, that's one of the roles that the chamber will be playing is that they were they will be point person on these public bathrooms. We will be supporting it from a budgetary standpoint. But you won't get called out there to to go that. I mean, they they, you know, just like anything, they may ask if they're in a pinch, they may say, hey, can somebody go check this out? Can the, obviously if there's problems, can the police go over there and and take a peek? You know, we're good partners and then that's something that the city would do for somebody who had some sort of delinquency or or vandalism happening, we would go check it out. But if it's a cleanup situation, unless there's a big pinch and they ask really, really nicely, no, it's not our responsibility.
Thanks. Other questions? I was, I think we're looking for an approval.
Yeah, so right now we're not executing the lease agreement. If there's any concerns with the lease agreement, I would love to hear them right now, but essentially I wanted to walk through this lease agreement. Make sure you understood what it was and that you're generally on board with it as well. Um, and to note that there is a letter of intent to sign this agreement by the chamber. Um, unless there's such, unless we make substantive changes to it. We would have to go back to them and ask about it, but they're generally on board with the components of this agreement. And so it's important to talk about that before we talk about the next agenda item, which is going out unauthorized could be. So I don't actually need uh any official action at this time.
Any other questions? Everybody comfortable? Any concerns? I think we'll move forward then. Item number ten, review of design, budget and authorization to go out for bids for Baroque Welcome Center, the bathhouse project.
Okay, our architect Mark Zettler is at the podium and uh we have an update. Mark, do you remember the last, when were we here last? Were we here at the beginning of the month or end of last year?
Well, and council was December and then we had our page turn, I believe on the fifteenth with the committee.
So um, we've reviewed this once before. Um, Mark is gonna sort of walk through it and specifically highlight changes since we reviewed this in December. Okay, and so Mark, you just let me know where you'd like to go.
Sure, I think we can skip ahead to the first floor plan, which is A one hundred. So that's the demo, that's first floor. So really not much has changed since the last council meeting, uh other than I did get the counter with the sink uh in the meeting room, that is an alternate. So we do have a number of alternates to try to uh help get costs where they need to be uh when the bids come in. And the information center, we've got the mobile workstation, which may or may not be there. And then we've got the display screens, which are also mobile on either side. And we've got the uh flex room, which you can see now uh mechanical has finally uh gotten their design finalized, so that we're gonna have a couple return ducts coming down. One is in the corner of that flex room. The other one is gonna be in closet one oh three. And uh we did switch the mechanical. We had two furnaces shown in the beginning. We now have one furnace serving the north two thirds of the building and then we have a rooftop unit that's directly above that new duct in the flex room that is serving the meeting room. So the meeting room will be its own climate zone with its own thermostat. And the rest of the building will be on a a different thermostat. So there will be uh ways to if nobody's using that meeting room, you can have the temperature turned down in the winter. Or in the summer, if you've got a big group of people in there, maybe you really want the AC going. So we do have that flexibility with the climate control. As far as the public space that can be open after hours, that really hasn't changed from the last design. You can come into the information center. And then the doorways to the meeting room and the hall to the offices can be locked after hours. But the restrooms could be left unlocked since they open directly into that room. And the uh ADA drinking fountain, which is a high and a low base and similar to out in the hallway here is located on that wall. Uh, we still have table and chair storage in the closet, which is one twelve. And we still have the uh aluminum storefront doorway, so that's gonna be mostly glass that opens onto the terrace. One thing I will note is that the preservation commission asked to move that solar pergola farther away from the building. So I have that in the current plans. This set of plans is about a week and a half old, so that has been shifted another five feet to the south. And I am waiting for confirmation from Ethos to tell me that that's okay because they study the sun path and the shadows created by the uh structure to the south. I believe that's an apartment building. So still waiting for confirmation on that, but that was the uh request of the preservation commission.
In generally, they requested it be moved to the south, so it would be plan east, right? Uh, because they wanted to make sure that it was differentiated from the historic building, that the sort of the pergola um as a structure was distinct and separate.
Yeah, I don't think functionally it really doesn't make a difference because the pergola was not touching the building originally. Now it's just gonna be about four or five feet off of the building. And uh we do have another alternate with that uh terrace. So underneath that uh pergola is a base bid of just a concrete slab and then if bids come in good, uh, we can choose to upgrade that to concrete pavers, which is similar to the front entryway. This is still shown as the concrete pavers, but uh a regular concrete slab is going to be less expensive than putting the pavers down. All right, uh, can we swing over to the office on the other side, please? So this uh minimal changes, um, like I mentioned, there's a duct coming down in office one oh three. I believe this layout was um how we had it the last time it went to council originally. Um, the tech room was in between the director's office and office one oh two. But um this uh for the last month, month and a half, this has been the layout. And you can see I've got the mechanical room updated with a single furnace, single mop sink and a water heater and the main electrical panel. And there will be a hose hookup outside on the uh where the one doorway is getting filled in, which is a wall tag C is right next to it on the bottom there, kinda got the gray hatch, yes. And then we've got another one proposed, which is either going to be on the north side of the building or on the uh south or on the east side of the building or the south side of the building. I'm showing it on the south right now. It may be less expensive to put it on the north and just tie into the plumbing for the sink that was added in the meeting room. So there will be hose access on the front and the back of the building for if you have landscaping or you need to hose off the terrace, whatever you need to with that. Any questions on the uh floor plan before we move ahead?
How would uh stamped concrete compared to the pavers um versus versus regular?
Stamped is still going to be less than pavers. It may be maybe a dollar per square foot more than just a regular flat slab with a broom finish. So it it would be just a little bit more than regular concrete, but we could also entertain that option.
That's an option, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Um, I think maybe we'll spend a little bit of time on the ceiling plan, which is the next sheet, okay? So you can see here, basically the northern two thirds of the building is all lay-in ceiling, similar to what we have in this room. And the restroom and the flex room also have that. And the entry outside is wood beadboard. And the en- the information center and the meeting space, we've got called out as exposed joists. So that is the structure, so we would be staining the two by twelves. That is the roof structure. And you can see that I've got the duct layout shown now, so that would be the mechanical coming across. And then we've got some can lights and some ceiling fans called out. And the two rectangles in the information center are the two salvaged windows from Old City Hall. We're gonna convert those into lights. So basically we'll be putting some uh tape light LED on the backside and I did check the glass today on those. That is a patterned glass. So that will be a nice kind of frosted look. They're not gonna throw a lot of light, it's more of an accent piece, so the majority of the lighting is gonna be the can lights in that room. And we do have an alternate in the meeting room to save costs, so if bids come in high, we can put a lay-in ceiling in that room. You'd be paying for the lay-in ceiling, but you wouldn't be staining the joists and you could go to rectangular ductwork, which is cheaper than spiral ductwork. All right, can we go to elevations, please? There we go. So this has not changed a whole lot since the uh last time. I think maybe I did not have the uh solar pergola shown on the plans the last time it came before council. But that is the size of the structure that Ethos is proposing. And again, that will be shifted away from the building another four or five feet from what I have it shown on these plans. Assuming that that still works with their sun angles. And then we've got a lot of tuck pointing. I do have in the bidding documents the contractors have to state their price for additional or reduced tuck pointing per square foot. So that depending on where the bids come in, we can do more or less um grinding out the mortar joints and putting new mortar in on the building. Cause there's a lot of patches on the building and I didn't specify um removing all of the patches that have been done over the time, because we'd basically be repointing the entire building at that point. There's probably three or four different kinds of mortar on that structure right now. I just picked the worst areas, which is the shaded areas. And I think this would be a good time to uh bring up the color rendering. Um, we had quite a bit of discussion at preservation commission about the colors on the building. So the stone is just going to be cleaned. But originally, the concrete portions on that building were painted white. And then they had steel windows. And so this scheme is what the preservation commission uh selected where we have black or charcoal gray doors and windows. And then we have white concrete, except for the very top, which is gonna be red, which um at some point in the building's history, all of the white concrete was painted red and there's still remnants of the red paint there now. So that was kind of um their nod to both periods for how the building looked. So any uh questions or comments on this? Okay, uh, the next sheet, um, we're starting to get into more of the technical drawings now, so these are the sections, which is an imaginary cut through the building. So you can see how the roof height relates and the stone walls that are exposed on the inside versus drywall. Uh, you can see that the interior stone walls in this building are only nine feet, six inches high. And the roof is up above that, so we will have about a two foot, give or take section of just drywall frame construction on top of those stone walls to close off the uh top to the underside of the roof. So that's gonna be the aesthetic on the inside. And this one, you can see the entryway outside, the beadboard's going to be at about ten feet, ten and a half feet. And then on the inside, that roof slopes down, so it's ten foot six in the front, nine foot six in the back to the bottom of the joist. So we're gonna come all the way down to the uh top of stone height at the back or the west side of the building. So that ceiling will be sloped. I believe I've got a half inch per foot pitch, which uh code minimum is a quarter inch per foot, so we are good for flat roof. Drainage off of the roof is just gonna be a scupper system with two downspouts coming out the back and we're going to discharge onto the uh lawn areas. So we're not gonna be tying this into a storm sewer. I think there's plenty of uh lot back there where it's just going to dissipate. Okay, next sheet, please. So now it's just technical stuff. This is the structural sheet, so we could skip this. This is all the doors, um, what we put on the walls, et cetera. So this is our framing plan, our lintels. We are going to need about a half dozen steel lintels to be replaced in the building, give or take because they're rusted out and some of them have deflected almost two inches, so they're they're kinda smiling at you. That's not a good thing. And uh we've got two by twelves at sixteen inches on center for the roof structure. And then we've got uh engineered wood beams over the information center and the meeting room. Um, I believe there are three L V Ls that are all nailed and screwed together. And then the next few sheets um are just mechanical electrical plumbing. That might be a different PDF. If we wanna go into that, or if you are fine skipping that, that's fine too. That's all the uh lighting drawings, the piping diagrams and um the ductwork diagrams.
Thanks, Mark. I thought it was important that this group take one final pass through the design of the building. There were some changes, as Mark had pointed out, since you last looked at it. So before you authorize something to go out to bid, I want you guys to be super comfortable because at the end of the day, it's your building. And you wanna make sure that it's constructed how you see fit. So if you have any changes, concerns, otherwise, I don't know as though we necessarily need to spend a time looking at all the ductwork and other mechanicals in the building. We we worked through um you know, placement of of power boxes and places like that with the chamber and they all feel comfortable about that they'll have enough access to both IT, um low voltage.
We do have three security cameras going in, one front, one back and one for the information center.
I'm just curious about the floor. Does the floor have to be torn out and then re-poured the entire thing?
Yes, because we were trying to keep it, but it's sloped to floor drains right now, so they'd have to dump how many gallons of self-leveling compound and by the time you get to that point, you still have to trench it to put the new plumbing in, so it's probably gonna be a wash demolishing it versus uh putting new in. And putting new in, we can put a two inch layer of rigid insulation under it to help keep some of the cold out from the ground, because this building does not have any foundation insulation.
With that, uh, we would move on to the budget if nobody has anything else regarding design, unless you have anything else you wanna point and mark.
Um, I'll just run down the alternates real quick, so I talked about a few of them. So basically, we've got the cabinet and sink in the meeting room. Uh, we've got the concrete slab versus pavers under the pergola. We've got a white roof versus a black roof, so that'd be an EPDM versus a woven membrane, which um K E E is the acronym for it. I'm not gonna try to pronounce the chemicals that make that up. We've got an alternate to add two inches of additional ins- insulation to the roof above code minimum. And then we've got the uh switching the exposed structure to a lay-in two by two ceiling in the meeting space. And we've got uh new wood doors being constructed by others and donated to the project versus the contractor furnishing and installing. So if we get a donation, somebody says, I wanna pay for the front door and the back door, we can do that. And then the two unit prices, I'm asking the contractor to state what percentage markup they're going to put on change orders. Doesn't really impact the cost upfront. But if you have a contractor that's putting a ten percent markup on change orders and one that's putting a fifteen percent markup on change orders, that could make a difference at the end of the project in the overall cost. And then the tuck pointing is the final unit price and that is an add or deduct change order based on where the bids come in.
Could, could you add the stamped concrete in as an option too versus just the pavers with flat concrete?
I think to keep it simple, I, if you want that, then I would need to know kinda what pattern and I will just say it's either gonna be stamped concrete or it's gonna be the pavers, because that stamped concrete's gonna be fairly close in price to the regular concrete. So I think at that point, we just have one or the other. So yeah, if you'd like that, I can change the uh bid form to say that.
Can you explain what exactly the difference would be between the two?
Basically, uh, regular slab, they just have a broom and they go over it. It's your regular whitish gray concrete. Stamped concrete, they add dyes or a powder into it. And depending on what you select, that you can either have a pattern or it can just be colored. So they can make it look like fake stone or whatever you want it to look like. They have brick, all that stuff.
Does that last a long time or is that?
It it's basically, it's the same as a concrete slab, so you know, it's gonna crack in the first five minutes and then
Don't say that.
I mean, you could make it look like the pavers versus putting the pavers in if it's.
Yeah, the the advantage to pavers is they usually don't crack, but every so many years you do have to lift them up and then rake the sand and put them back down.
And so what you're saying, Mark, is you wouldn't wanna do an alternate where it's three different options?
That's gonna get too confusing.
Yeah, you're asking to, if you, it's pavers would remain an alternate, but you're going, you're making the decision now to either go with a plain broom.
Broom finish.
Broom finish concrete or stamped concrete.
Approximately, what's the difference in the price? I know you said a dollar.
No, I would say a dollar per square foot, probably.
How many square feet are they?
Oh, what do we got? Oh, what do we got? I mean, you'd probably be looking at maybe a thousand dollar difference.
That could be part of a change order eventually too then.
Yes.
So do you want to make a motion to officially change? Okay.
Cause we, we could just do it as a change order after bids are in, if you want to go from broom finish to stamped too.
Seems like you're comfortable maybe taking that approach if the budget allows. And at this point, leaving it as either broomed concrete or with the alternate for pavers. Anybody else? All right. Thanks, Mark. Let's go on the last part, the budget. Where are we at? So what I have on, in front of you here is uh, a comparison of the current budget with where we were at when we moved the project forward under the CDI grant. So the CDI grant um, was sort of, I guess, obtained uh, right around the end of last October. And this was the sort of the last piece in the puzzle for them is to have an updated budget. So that 1030 budget is where we were um, at the end of October and 128 is the budget we're at today. Uh, Mark might be able to help us on this part about where the majority of the increases came in in construction. I seem to recall him noting that it was a lot of site work that we didn't originally intend. Um, is, is what a large driver was. Um, maybe you could just walk us through what some of the increases.
Sure. So I know that really that whole south pergola really was not defined in the beginning. And so the foundations for that were added in from October until the most recent budget number. And I think some of that uh, concrete slab work and everything else got quite a bit bigger. Um, another thing that we added in was I, there was about a 20,000, give or take dollar increase with the roof structure going from just putting it into framing it nicely and staining it for that exposed look. So that wasn't completely defined the last time back in October. So those are, those are some of the bigger increases that we had.
The other changes from last budget, you'll see owner development and soft costs. We had been using what I would consider a, a $27,000 amount that had simply been in the budget. And from its earliest conception, that was a, just a round number we were using to identify just extra costs that we may incur as owners. Um, those are things like permits, um, connection fees with Excel and communications, other, other things to get the um, the project uh, up and operating that aren't necessarily the responsibility of the contractor or the architect. Uh, after crunching numbers and looking back at what city hall had been and the fire station is, I think we can drop that um, amount by $8,000 and still have a little bit of cushion there if some unknown things crop up that we didn't think of at this point. And then site related and fees and testing was dropped um, considerably. Um, because a lot of that site work that Mark just alluded to is now contained within the construction cost category. So there's no reason to sort of um, account for it twice. Um, but we do still want to make sure that we have some money available there if something crops up um, during demolition or during construction that we need to go out for more testing or need to do uh, further site work. Um, there's always stuff that comes up. So I felt comfortable dropping those two after further review and sort of sharpening pencils. So that um, is a $15,000 change to the positive. The last thing is that contingency amount. Um, and, and speaking with Mark, he would like to see a higher contingency, but that right there, that 32,852 is a 5% contingency. Um, and so we'll just have to be really mindful of um, our approaches to the building. And I, I have had conversations uh, you know, with Cindy about like, hey, what does it mean to walk into a project with less contingency than what you would really like? And so all that said, our current total project budget with um, a certain amount of interim financing available. Um, if we need to um, make those construction payments before pledges come in, before we get our reimbursements back from CDI. Which CDI, I'm not really worried about their reimbursement timeline is should be really short. The pickle with them is that they only allow you three reimbursements per project. So if the project stretches out over the course of 12 months, then we may have to sit with um, outstanding payer class longer. Um, so it's just something to be mindful and I've done my best to sort of do a cash forecast on that, but it's a little bit of a, a challenge, uh, you know, crystal ball sort of work. So at the end of the day, um, what you're looking at is the, the net difference between project revenues and project costs based on our current forecast, about $47,000. Um, which is why we have considered alternates, right? Sort of saying, put this in the project budget. We want to see this get done if it can. But if it can't get done, we're prepared to pull it. And that's what all the things that Mark was talking about cabinets and sinks, concrete slab versus pavers. The meeting room being switched from exposed joists to the laying ceiling. The roof and so, you know, all the, all of the above um, will come in and should reduce the price to get us under. Um, you know, to basically match our budget. That additional, now of course, there's about $4,600 of additional dollars in there that even at this point were, were over. And so that's where I had a conversation with Cindy about contingency plans and everything else. And I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Um, yes, the task force, which I might add, we've got Gene Driscoll, we've got Karen Innes and Randy Skinner online. Who've been instrumental in getting us to this point. Yes, we have met and uh, Mark, of course, and um, for one thing, 5,000 is very doable. I see absolutely no problem with us raising $5,000 more. But if we need to raise more than that, we have a strategy to talk to the larger pledges pledges first and say, you know, please help us. We need X amount to get across the finish line. And I don't think we'll have a problem with that. Uh, Erin Aslan was very positive about that approach and thinking that that would not be a problem. So I feel confident that we'll be able to meet the budget.
And I appreciate Cindy's work on that. I think what I hear articulating is just a recognition that if, if there is overages in the budget, they're prepared to go find that dollars. Um, and I think the direction that they've been given is that don't go and ask for it now, right? Like wait until the bids come in, understand what your total is before you go making your asks, right? And so I think that's a, a smart approach by people who know about that stuff better than I. And at this point, um, the budget is showing a deficit of again, $4,600, which is Cindy said is, should be manageable if that's the way things shake out.
Um, just a question on uh, I guess the, the construction. You don't have to be like historically, I don't know, certified or anything to place a bid on a project this, or do you have to be?
No, so the, there's no um, requirements on the contractor or the bidders for being historically certified. I am a historic preservation architect, so I meet the federal qualifications for that.
Thank you. And Mark's job will be essentially, once they start doing the work, making sure that they do it per the design he's come up with, right? Any questions? So at this point, again, we're not committing kidney dollar amounts. This is just the newest um, budget forecast that we have for the group. And it's an important piece of the conversation. And so uh, the, the approval tonight would be to send the project out to bid. Understanding that this is the design and this is the best projection of numbers that we have. And we let Mark go to work in getting this out. And then about a month, a little bit more than a month from now, we would have bits back. And we will talk further.
Yeah. So I am targeting um, Friday for final coordination completion. We may go through the weekend and get the stuff ready Monday. But right now, uh, the design team is 95% complete.
Thank you. Any other questions? There's no, again, just his name. There's no action on this one, but if you have thoughts or concerns now is the
Oh, we do need an authorization to go out to bid.
Yeah, I thought review of design budget. Oh. I didn't read all the way. I didn't see authorization. Sorry. Yes. So we do need a motion.
And this is Crystal and I would move that we move forward with authorization to go out for bids for the Veroca Welcome Center Bath House project.
Say GL second.
Get a motion in a second. Do you want to do roll? Okay, we'll do a voice vote then. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good. Thank you. Um, I would
I'm not sure if we caught you or not on that one.
I might have went too fast.
Sorry. No, I didn't get it. My mic button time, but I am I'm an I as well. So sorry.
Great. Thank you. Sorry. That's my fault. I think I went too fast. Um, I would like to now move item number 13, which is payment of the bills up ahead of the closed session. That way the department heads and folks that are here don't have to wait if we want to do that. So if everybody's okay with that, well, we'll do that. Thank you for coming, everybody.
Okay, these all went to um, finance um, this evening. And so I don't really have a lot of things to point out on here. The one thing I did want to add along with the bills is that we do, we did receive their $2 million for the North Point development that I need to do a wire transfer for. And I didn't want to have that not approved by you guys as well without just going and doing a $2 million transfer. So unless anybody has questions on the bills, um, I can go through them. But when you do make your motion to approve, if you could also include that $2 million wire transfer approval as well.
I'll make a motion. We pay the bills and to include the $2 million wire transfer.
Just a second.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Emma?
Aye.
Todd Spade?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Todd Kirke.
Aye.
All right. With that, I think we'll move back then up to item number 11, which is possible closed session per Wisconsin statute 1985 one C. Considering employment promotion, compensation and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governing body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This is in regards to utility auxiliary worker compensation. Thank you all.
I'll make a motion. We go into closed session.
This is AJ, I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. We'll do a roll call, please.
Todd Spade?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Todd Kirke?
Aye.
And Emma?
Aye. Sorry, I'm a little just trained to do multitasking in the back.
Okay, Mayor, um, we got the meeting is being recorded. Doors are open. Everybody who's, who was in the waiting room, which was nobody is back in.
Perfect.
So we are back in open session.
Wonderful. All right. So we will move on to item number 12 then, which is to reconvene and open session with possible action on items discussed during closed session.
I make a motion. We proceed with what was decided in closed session.
This is Crystal, I'll second.
In a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Crystal?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Todd Kirke?
Aye.
Emma?
Aye.
Todd Spade?
Aye.
And Cindy?
Aye.
All right. Um, still nobody in the waiting or in the, on the Zoom. So second period for public comment, nobody here, nobody on Zoom. We'll move to item number 12, which is, or 15, which is adjournment.
Start and make a motion to adjourn. AJ, I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.